I want to thank everybody for coming to this meeting, Town Council meeting, May 31st, 2017. We have been in executive session. We came out of executive session to come into an open session. I'd like a motion to approve the minutes of May 23rd, 2017.
Motion to approve.
Motion's been made. Second and all in favor?
I have one amendment in the motion to proceed out of order and into executive session. I would like to amend the minutes to clarify that the executive session was for the purpose of discussing security strategies under executive session purpose number four.
There's been a motion to amend? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second on the amendment. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We're going to vote on the minutes as amended. Have a motion? So move. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next on the agenda is the continuation of the public hearings from last week. I'll read the first one. It's a public hearing. Transfer $95,000 from Fund Pavement Projects' Water Sewer Line Item, MWRA Contract Five. I want to be heard in favor.
There's several items on Contract Five. Finance Committee met on May 23rd here at the CD Center. All the motions related to Contract Five were will forward deposit recommendations.
Thank you, Counsel.
We're prepared to answer any questions that the council may have on any of these items. They're all taken as a matter of the suite of funding proposals that come forward to pay for Contract Five. Contract Five is a continuation of a series of capital improvements that we have been doing around the town to improve neighborhoods that need immediate attention for water and sewer and street and stormwater upgrade. Steve Cowell is here to generally, you know, address it globally, but we've identified five sources of funding to pay for this using as much available funds that at low cost as possible to the rate payers of Winter. And I think really a lot of this goes to the credit of the town, the council, with Steve and his management and finance in the sense that, you know, we've been able to manage these resources such that we've been able to create retained earnings and redeploy them back into the infrastructure, which then ultimately helps keep our rates down. So we are making significant capital investment while utilizing as many of the available resources we have without having to increase rates. So that's really a good news story for the town. Steve, you want to add anything to the comment?
No, that touched upon a lot of it. Does everybody understand the project? It's a project that we did, we started a year ago with the gas company getting all their work done and fit on our capital plan and like the managers. Some of the funding, a good portion of the funding is leftover money from us doing like versus the meter upgrade project being that being done in house has left us some money available to put towards the infrastructure. So it's a needed project and it's fully designed and we want to put it out to bid in June for July once, hopefully.
Any public comment? If not, of course, the hearing. Second item is open for public comment. It's a transfer of $150,000 from the fund meter upgrade water sewer line item, MWRA Contract Five. Counsel Delvento.
Same thing, Counsel. This was one of the items that we moved forward on 23rd.
Any public comment? If none, we'll close the hearing. Next item on the agenda for public comment, I'll open for public comment. Appropriate $100,000 for purposes of financing engineering design of Underhill Hutchinson Line Item, MWRA Contract. Counselor.
Again, that was one of the five items to move forward, positive recommendation.
Okay. Any public comment regarding that particular appropriation? If not, of course, a closing comment. I'm sorry. Yes? Just if you come up to the microphone and...
Don Henning, please in three. I would just like to know where it's coming from because it just says appropriate. So I would like to know where that money's going to come from, which fund?
That $100,000 is a lead abatement loan from the MWRA to remove lead from our distribution system. And we'll be removing 85 lead services as part of the project and MWRA will fund us 10 years zero interest loans of $100,000 to remove those.
Any other public comment? If not, we'll close the hearing. Next on the agenda is the transfer $525,000 from the water sewer retained fund, new line item, water sewer fund, MWRA Contract Five. Counsel Delvento.
Again, that was an item that we moved forward on 23rd.
Okay. Public comment? If none, we'll close the hearing. Next item is the transfer $115,225 from the Capital Stabilization.
No, hold on, Russ.
I'm sorry?
One above that.
Okay. Did I miss one?
$500,000.
$500,000.
Oh, okay. Apologize. Kind of knew at this, so I do apologize. Appropriate $500,000 for purposes of financing engineering design for Underhill Hutchinson Line Item, MWRA Contract Five. Hearing has been opened. Counsel Delvento.
Mr. President, that was part of the package that we moved forward as the Contract Five.
I want you to mention that, Steve.
So the $500,000 is remaining funded to do the project. The project is estimated at 1.5 million. That $500,000 would be additional funding. Everything else is transferred from...
Existing funds. Okay. Any public comment? Yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch where that money was going to be appropriated from.
That money's actually to be bonded. That's not existing money. The town would have to go up on that part.
I'm sorry, I don't understand that process so much. So is that money we're going to have to borrow or come up with somewhere within the town?
No, that's borrowed.
We're going to borrow $500,000. We're going to have to pay back $500,000 to somebody?
Yeah, we're actually going to have to pay back a few of those dead loans. But that's those loans, there's loans through MWRA, which is zero interest loans, and that's bonded money. I don't, I'm thinking the interest rate's probably around 3 percent.
This would be something that would be paid for by the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund, not the general fund.
Okay, so what you're saying to me, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to understand this process a little bit, is if it says appropriate, it means we're borrowing slash...
Bonding.
Bond or borrowing, which means loan, which means we're going to have to pay back. You're saying it's going to be more than $500,000. It's going to be a bunch of these and we're going to pay back to the MWRA?
One of the loans is with the MWRA. The other one would be general obligation bonds. We would go out to the, just like what was done with Miller Field and the schools issue, municipalities issue debt on a regular basis. So we would be taking on those bonds and pay back the bondholders for those.
Okay, but Miller Field and the school, right, we voted on. So when you say that we have to take on these, I'm just trying to clarify exactly how much money we're going to have to borrow slash pay back and to whom. So...
We don't know to whom because bonds are sold through a competitive process. So the, whatever organization offers us the best rate is the one who the bond would be sold to through a number of considerations. It's an open process. Lots of different institutions bid on municipal bonds. It's a very safe investment. But as far as paying it back, this is not like Miller Field. It is not something that is a debt exclusion. It will not be added directly to residents' tax bills. This is something that would be paid for by the Water Sewer Enterprise Fund through its regular debt service line.
So when you say Water Sewer Enterprise Fund, does that mean our water bills? Is that what our Water Sewer Enterprise Fund is? Is our water bills part of that fund?
Yes.
So if we're going to have to pay somebody back what that money and we have to use that fund, that could possibly mean an increase in our water rates to fund that. Okay, I'm just trying to understand how this is part.
Okay. Thank you. And this is not uncommon, this is not uncommon with other municipalities, the part of the MWR...
That's right. We have essentially a credit line with MWR. They encourage us to make improvements to our water distribution system because if we don't, we pay more. We pay more in terms of failed systems. We pay more in terms of the cost for emergency matters that happen that we have to deal with. We have to make very planned improvements to our system and for which we receive zero interest rate loans as an encouragement to keep on track with a planned infrastructure improvement program. And we're sticking with that discipline. So this has been a planned matter for the town for a long time as we have done contracts one through four thus far. You've seen these improvements on the Hill. You've seen them in Precinct Five. You've seen them all over town frankly that we've made these improvements to make sure that our residents are getting the water distributed to them appropriately and without disruption in service and without major infrastructure problems. And so we have to stay on a very steady diet of improvement going forward. And this won't be the last matter that we do because we strategically plan for these improvements every so many years. And this is the next leg of that planned strategy. And we've done it very successfully thus far. We've kept our rates very competitive and frankly, we've opened up headroom within our budget in order to pay for a lot of this within existing funds. So frankly, this is a, this is a very, I think, and MWR has agreed to offer us these opportunities to borrow from them because they see prudence in what we're doing.
We actually have obligation to with the DEP, with that distribution program.
Counsel Delvento.
And another thing, this piece of the system that's being replaced is well over 80 years old and most of the lines are lead lines. So that's why we've been trying over the past six years to redo the water mains and sewer mains in this town to get rid of system, parts of system that are 75 years plus, some over 100 years replaced parts of town and all these lead services.
Thank you, Counsel Delvento. Any other public comment? If not, we'll close the meeting. We'll move on to the next item. Transfer $115,225,000 from Capital Stabilization Fund to the General Fund to Grant Match Bell Isle Marsh. Thank you, Stephen.
Counsel, the Finance Committee also met on this item and on 23rd, motion to move it forward to the full council, positive recommendation.
These are match funds for the grants that we've received for Bell Isle Marsh project. We were able to secure nearly $300,000 in additional grant funding for the project. We have an obligation to have the town pay 25% to meet the 75% grant that we received. So this is our obligation in accepting those funds to finish this, to make this project complete.
Thank you. Any public, any other public comment? If not, we'll close the hearing. The next three items on the agenda, two, three. Transfer $75,000 from the General Stabilization Fund slash ferry.
Motion to continue.
Motion's been made to continue. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Next item is transfer $26,750 from General Stabilization Fund, mobile restroom trailer.
Motion to continue also.
Motion's been made to continue. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is the transfer $41,256 from the Capital Stabilization Fund for pickup truck for the school custodial services.
Motion to continue.
Motion to continue. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is public comment. Do you have anybody who'd like to speak under public comment? Peggy Carr, you don't mind coming right up? I'm sorry. Lisa's obligated. I was closer, sitting next to each other.
Thank you, Counsel President Sanford. I don't know. One of the comments I had was on items to continue. I had written comments like perhaps leave that. And another comment I have is for something upcoming. I don't know if there'll be separate comment on the rules and ordinance report. If not, I can make that now as well. So the first piece was just about, and this is continued, but it's relative to the transfer of funds for the ferry. I would just strongly urge that no transfer of funds be made to the ferry fund until a full accounting of the ferry capital and operating costs, including both the sources and uses of all funds spent to date and future projections, is provided to the town council by an outside independent accounting firm that would be retained and overseen directly by the council. Let that report be made available publicly. So that my comment relative to the, one of the items that was continued, I think, perhaps the next. The second comment is relative to the, I think, a very productive meeting that was held by the Rules and Ordinance Committee. We could go for about parking for, to support developments in downtown. And I would just make three quick comments. There was a discussion about the Walden Street Lot perhaps being made available as CBD resident overnight parking. I would support that happening, but not that it'd be exclusive to the residents from any one building at this time. You know, with that approach, I think it could be available for other CBD residents now and ones who might be there in the future as well. That would be the first comment on that. The second comment is that the developers, this is required by the CBD ordinance, but I thought I would make this comment in any event, the developers may downtown residential units who are not able to put all of their parking that's required onsite, they need to have some put offsite, to be assessed to that $2,000 per space one time fee for any space that they're unable to accommodate onsite. And that depends in accordance with the bylaw. So I don't think it's of the discretion of Town Council anyway, but I thought I would make that comment. And then this also may be required by the bylaw. I didn't have a chance to go back and look this up. That $2,000 per space fee would be put into a parking fund to work toward longer term solutions for downtown parking. And lastly, related to this parking issue, the town council should appoint a group of resident experts to make recommendations on longer term solutions to the parking challenges if we hopefully continue to grow. And then I have some, I will, this is written as well, so I can hand this to the secretary. I have some suggestions on what the makeup of that group might look like and the size of that group. But I think there's good progress made toward the beginning of comment, of the conversation about dealing with parking short term, long term in the downtown. And I would really urge that continue with the Town Council's direction. Again, kind of a group that would be created by you reporting directly to Town Council.
Thank you, Lisa. And Lisa's also in the Economic Development Citizens Advisory Committee. They've been very helpful on that. If you can submit that to our secretary, that'd be great. Public comment?
Steven Heinz. For those who don't know, my name is Steven Heinz from Precinct Six. I'm an active member of the Transportation Advisory Committee for the town of Winter. I'm also an organizing member of the unofficial Center Business District advocacy group by guess for business owners. We meet on the first Monday of every month at Black Shop BBQ to discuss CBD related issues and learn as much as we can about the future of that neighborhood in particular. We're holding the first Monday meeting. We have an official meeting on the first Thursday of each month at the evening school with the Economic Development Subcommittee of our Town Council. My only goal here tonight is to thank Counsel President Sanford, Counsel Henning, and Counsel Royager for spending so much time with us as we navigate all of the coming changes. We are so appreciative of your effort, your transparency, enthusiasm for the development of this crucially important neighborhood. The next couple of years are going to be exciting but difficult. Please know that we are here with our collective expertise and we are willing to help in any capacity necessary. Please keep up the good work.
Steven, thank you for that. Appreciate that comment. Anyone else in public comment?
We're back.
You look familiar.
My name is Deanna Ferretta. I'm Precinct Five, but my role with the town is a public health nurse. I am here to address the council regarding the proposed budget for the Health Department. In 2015, both the Police Department and Health Departments recognized a need for programming to address opioid, substance use disorder, and mental health issues facing the remainder of the community. My predecessor, Meredith Harley, was a founding member of this program and worked tirelessly to modernize and expand the programs in the Health Department. Our efforts along with the team of Chief Davahanti, Sergeant Giarani, Deanna Rosioni, Indy Estine, Chip McHugh, and Danielle Parnakes continue to build a very special and unique program. I feel grateful to have the opportunity to work for the community where I was raised and where I am now raising my children. My time in this role has been spent to continue the efforts of Meredith and build a sustainable program for the town. We have some handouts here regarding our presentation from last week that we shared with the council. And we understand that there may be some concerns around liability. So we've put together a handout and Deanna should have it.
Okay, great. Yes, that'd be great.
I'd be clear. My request to the council is to review the Health Department's proposed budget that has been asked to go down. And if you are to accept the budget that's proposed to you now, I will not support programming that's currently happening in the Health Department. I want to be clear that if the budget moves forward with all this increase, the Recovery Coach Clear Program that has been worked upon over the last several years will end this June. It will not have structures for sustainability for the funding necessary to continue this program. Please advise me of any next steps that I can take to help facilitate this process. Thank you.
Any questions from the council?
Well, I guess, so why couldn't the, why couldn't the peer councils continue to exist as is rather than under the, under the town, I guess?
So number one, there's not enough funding to sustain their two roles. The roles began as grant funded with minimal hours and as their needs and the funding grew, their hours grew. They are now both two full-time employees. And there were two singular donations made by supporters of the program, but those donations have come out. And now we're down to a few grants with a minor from the town, but it won't be enough to move forward. A second piece of that is right now they're being paid as vendors of the town. But because I supervise them, I instruct them on how the program operates, where they can deliver their services, how they deliver their services, documentation, all of that excludes them from being considered contractors with the town.
So they, for legal issues, they shouldn't be under the town?
Legal issues and financial. And if they're vendors of the town, I can't make demands of them as far as deliverables, documentation, making sure that they comply with their hours, making sure that they're delivering their services where I need them to be delivered. So if we have specific programming needs, I can't, they're just contractors and they're allowed to kind of deliver their services as well.
And if I remember correctly, is healthcare, even as a contractor, the one that's employing you, still liable for their act of tenure?
Yeah, we are still liable. That's correct.
Okay. So, no, and you provided the...
We've got the information.
No, but thank you. I think, how do, well, yeah.
And just as a point that's highlighted in that, in that handout, the city of Walden has taken on the additions counselor as a line item city employee who is beginning to generate a program similar to this and that is supported between the partnerships with community agencies in Walden, the Police Department and other departments.
I think this has been a great program. It's nationally recognized and I think we have to take a serious look at it. I think each one of the councils will do that for you.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you. Chief?
Thank you. I wasn't going to speak tonight on that program, but since they brought it up, the program's success is not due to one person, one department. It's a cross-cultural thing in the town. It's the town manager's office that's allowed to be in this area, the flexibility, the training, and the conferences, and making connections nationwide. Tomorrow, Sid and Jurgari is on the conference called Nevada Police Department, talking about our program and how they are represented in Nevada. I'm in native tomorrow afternoon doing a presentation that we did at the National Threat Summit for the Navy Police Department and their coalition. Deanna, last week was in Walden explaining our program. So God let we just help our own. We believe that the full program is in handy to duplicate in other similar sized communities. So we thank all the members of the council, the town manager's office for showing that support and giving us that support when no one in town really wanted to admit we had a problem. So thank you. And thank you, Deanna and Deanna for doing a lot of this research. And they go and did a great job. And we want this to be and continue to be successful. A great book out there is Dreamland that tells us the problem and how it started. It started with the medical pads and doctors' offices. Because everyone had to dress pain. And that pain was addressed by over prescribing opiates. And Drew Flower in Connecticut had been sued and helped criminally responsible for lying to doctors and saying it was a non-addicted drug. So there is blame to be put out there. But when someone's addicted, the Vietnam era was last heroin addiction that we've seen. And we were still dealing with people 40 years later that were addicted to heroin. So this is not a short-term solution. This is a long-term problem and we need a long-term response. So thank you. Thank you to the manager. Thank you to the council, citizens advisory committee as well for helping us fund this program. Secondly, I just wanted to address, since people spoke on the Center Business District so elegantly and probably did a better job than I could do on that program, is we just can't forget that we're building out the center and that we're looking at parking and where our long-term and short-term parking is going to be is how do we make it easily enforced. And, you know, no one wants to talk about meters. And, but that's the easiest thing for us. We can't chalk tires anymore. It's illegal for us to chalk tires. We can't put a mark on a tire. The appeals court, Supreme Court has told us. So we need some mechanism in place that we know that car has been there for a certain period of time without getting a marking in tires and coming back two hours later. So I would suggest our short-term parking plan should be what that. And then we should come to a conclusion rather quickly on what that looks like. I would suggest the easiest thing for police officers is meter. But again, I think the study committees can look at all that. And then we get a long-term parking which allows people to have extended parking. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Anyone else for public comment? Ms. Boncory?
Can I load this up?
Yeah, absolutely.
Hi, I'm Angel Boncory and I'm a resident parking expert myself. I've been a 28-year owner and resident of Putnam Place. And I'm a 53-year resident of the town. So I know what Putnam Place looked like before it was developed. It was a huge swamp full of mosquitoes and very unattractive area of town. Well, since then, I'm sure everybody's driven through there to make the turn around and can see how beautiful a neighborhood it is there. It's not just a beautiful looking neighborhood. There's a lot of beautiful people that live there. And we are very concerned about the development of the old King Kings Theater building. We're concerned that there are going to be two more floors added to the top of an already behemoth of a building. And we don't think it's going to fit in with the nature of my neighborhood or the center. The parking down there is atrocious, as anybody knows. Two years ago, we had a full month of no parking on the street. A full month of a parking behind. And that's setting me up pretty busy. We understand there are going to be between 31 and 34 condo units in there. And we're figuring, even if they are one bedroom apartments, if a couple buys it, there'll be two cars per unit. We just don't see where up to 68 cars are going to park in the center. We know that in French Square, there's plans for a master plan to eliminate some parking there. So you're going to lose probably 12 spaces there. You're going to eliminate parking on Hagman Road. That's 14th to 18th there maybe. I took the liberty of examining the area too. You know, I walk around there a lot naturally. And I counted the cars in Hagman Park. and I counted the cars in Hagman Park, and this, at night, there's 33 cars in there. They also, the developers said they could probably pick up 10 spaces behind the cars by ridiculous. On a Tuesday night, there were 24 cars in there, one empty space and one empty handicap space. If you come down with the Los Siesterres and the Home Contract, some said it's loaded, there's no place to park there either. We're just worried that an already congested area is going to be totally congested. There's just really nowhere to put, the, the building is right on the corner of, Jefferson Hill, which is the parking on one side, on the way over here tonight, there's only one space available there. They built two townhouses here now, so you're going to need four more cars for that one there. I'm just thinking that maybe we could tone down the development to a reasonable number, where we don't have to add two floors and really darken the whole area. You know, it's dark enough down there already, you know, the building is really big, is really big. I also have a second question about the construction. We heard that the construction duration will be two years, and we're wondering, we're going to put the cranes, the big eye bars, the cement trucks, and all the equipment and provisions, are we going to put it in Michael's Mall across our lawns? Where are we going to put all this? We have to close the streets? We're going to build during the winter? What is the, what are the ramifications of building a structure of that size on little streets like that?
Thank you, Angela.
I think I spun it out there. I just wanted everybody to be aware of the situation that the danger our neighborhood is in. We love it there, we want to stay in winter, we think we've added to the town the beauty of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Next, thank you, Angela. Mr. Lacerdo?
Sorry, I'm Michael Lacerdo, resident of Precinct Six and business owner in Precinct Five. Clearly, there's been a lot of transitions, I actually have two questions. There's been a lot of talk tonight specifically about the center, and given some transitions, we now no longer have a Precinct Five counseling. And so, I just wanted to bring that up, I know that there's provisions within the charter to find a replacement, but I'm sure that if average person hasn't read the charter in the last 24 hours of last week, so it was more of a question of what's the process, and how do we swiftly get somebody up there to represent Precinct Five with all the things that are going on with the Center Business District? So that's the first one. The second question with transition is, for better or for worse, with the town manager moving on, or being announced that it's being, that it's moving on, what's going to be the process to identify the search committee for a replacement? And is that something that is going to be something that's built of citizens in the town, or whatever, that's something that the council handles alone? So, just two questions. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I'll speak to both of those. Number one is, we don't have anything on the agenda tonight, we have, I was going to do it under committee reports. In fact, why don't we continue with, if you don't mind, with public comment, and then I'll, I'll touch on a couple of those items. Anything else for public comment? Anybody might have? No? Okay, that being said, next item is the correspondence on our agenda. I've had multiple requests for someone to fill the vacancy in Precinct Five that I once had a week ago. So what I'd like to do is put it on the agenda, I'd like to accept anybody who's interested in that position to contact any one of us on the council. I'd like to put a committee together quickly and, and fill that void as quickly as we can. So that's going to be the discussion for our next meeting, so we will put that on the agenda. Secondly, what's taking place with the town manager's level is he's decided not to renew his contract. We are going through a process now to discuss the pluses and minuses of how that's going to work. If and when that does take place, and we will put together a, a committee, as we did when we hired this particular town manager, to be proposed, I would imagine of the council and some folks from the business areas and some ordinary citizens, townspeople. We want to make sure that we make this transition right for the town, as well as for the town manager as he moves forward, and that's very important to this council and to the citizens, and as, and as anybody else who was coming for that position, to make sure that they know that they have a solid community here. So, that's the way we're going to approach things going forward.
Yeah, we have those requirements.
I'm sorry?
That, when we announce opening for Precinct Five, there are those requirements that have to go, we have to make the people in Precinct Five aware that there was an opening, and leave it open for a period of time before we can do anything.
And we'll be a little bit more clear on that, we've got some interpretations from the charter from our complement page, who are our attorneys, town attorneys, so we'll be bringing that forward at our next meeting. Thank you. Any other public comment?
Hi, I'm Robert Taylor, I live in Putnam Place too. Angela has concerns, and again, we're sort of mirroring the same things. One of the problems we all feel that might happen is, there's a very limited amount of parking spot on Putnam Place, and if the condos don't end, people are going to get overnight parking, there's going to be absolutely no parking for us, because people will get two cars. If there's one parking spot for them, they're going to put it up on Putnam Place, and basically we'll have cars there all the time. So people who live there won't have any place to park, because it's just going to be jam with cars. So, when this comes around, I'm sure there'll be a lot more discussions about it, I hope people will take notice of people who live up at Putnam Place, and don't, you know, lose all the parking that we have. If we have anyone coming over, there'll be virtually no place for us to park.
So noted, thank you.
Thank you.
If not, we're going to close public comment, correspondence, as I said before, we've had a request from a number of folks who are interested in Precinct Five. Next thing on our agenda is committee reports. We'll start off with rules in order. Yes, Counselor Boncory.
Thank you. The Rules and Rules Committee has had two meetings since our last big meeting. First one was on May 15th at 7:00 PM, President with myself and Counselor Delvento, Counselor Hagman, and numerous citizens from the town of Winthrop, there were discussion, there was the overnight parking for the Center Business District and social media. There were numerous people in attendance, most of them were speaking in favor of development. We also had a group from Putnam Place that was speaking against the development, and they're worried about where the parking would be. On that evening, both issues were tabled into the next meeting. The next meeting was held on Monday, May 22nd at 7:00 PM. President with myself, Counselor Verone, Counselor Delvento, Counselor Cal, Counselor Sanford, we had Joe D'Amelovis there from the committee, and numerous citizens of the town. There were two issues again taken up. The first one was overnight parking in the center, a motion was made by Counselor Verone and seconded by Counselor Delvento to have a Center Business District overnight parking area. I will be making a motion under New Business to add a bylaw to Town Bylaws. That motion was passed unanimously, and as I said, I will be making a motion under New Business on that new bylaw. The second issue was the social media policy. A motion was made to recommend the social media policy that was prepared by Carla Vitale, and I want to thank her for putting that together. We reviewed it, and it was very good, and again, we're going to be making a motion under New Business for the council to adopt that. And the meeting adjourned at 8:30.
Thank you, Counselor. Next on the agenda is Finance Committee. Counselor Delvento?
Excuse me, Mr. President. Finance Committee met on May 23rd here at the senior center. President with myself as chair, and Counselor Boyage in military, as well as Tom Andrew McKenna, Biz, yeah, I forget his name.
Zaleski.
Zaleski. Counselor Hagman, Counselor Cal, Counselor Verone, and Counselor President Sanford. First five items that we were, we grouped together were the items for the Contract Five water sore roadway work. Those were on move forward with the two-to-one vote. The Belle Isle Mash Grant Match was lengthly discussed, as well, in move forward with the unanimous vote. The 14,000, these couple items that are going to be coming up later, there's 14,000 for Inspector Services for steadily properties, excuse me, does move forward with a positive vote, and the other item will table until our next meeting.
Thank you, Counselor. Next on our agenda is town meeting, Town Manager's Report.
Yes, good evening, thank you. I have handed out to the council a memorandum I received from contractors hired by the MWRA who are urging the council to consider a request to conduct night work for the sewer study. This is the engineering firm Hazen and Sawyer, these, what's necessary is for an internal inspection of the sewer main that runs from Belle Isle to Deer Island. An internal investigation of that sewer, if you can imagine. And that sewer was built in 1892, it's built a brick in large measure, and needs to have very frequent inspection, and it's a slow-going process. So, they need to work after the 17th for three weeks, essentially taking three pieces of pipe each night and examining it for cracks and any other issues that might, might be there, so they can address those concerns. So they're asking for the council to consider allowing them to do night work, even though our ordinance prohibits night work from dawn, except the hours of dawn to dusk. So, that is within the purview of the council. I'd ask at their next meeting to, to consider a motion to allow for this activity to be conducted. On the, essentially, over the work area, there'll be some folks at night, they are aware of the noise issues, they're aware of the lighting issues, they'll have lights, I understand, that will be shrouded essentially, and only directed down towards the work area. So they're hopeful that they won't impact anyone, but, you know, work is work, and so people will, well, some people certainly will, will see that, that work is going on and, and probably hear a few, a few things here and there, but I, I believe that this, this activity has gone on in the past, and these folks are hired to, as experts, to conduct themselves in ways that will minimize the impact to the community. Please read the submission that I've given to the council tonight, and I'd ask for consideration of allowing them to work during this period of time. It would be from, three weeks from beginning of June 17th. We had a very successful and well-attended meeting of the Metro Mayor's Coalition here in this room, discussing the opioid challenges in the region, and we received a report from MAPC that showed how all of the member communities were addressing the issue of, of the impact of opioid within their communities, and it was very eye-opening, I was happy to see Counselors Boncory and Cal there in attendance, and I think we learned a lot. It was certainly a place where Winthrop showcased, well, its original thinking and what we're doing with that issue. And so, I thank the Chief, Delahanti, for his comments and opening the meeting, and I think a lot of, a lot of good work is happening among our communities in terms of dealing with this issue, more to come as we continue to collaborate on it. We, we are asking the chief tonight to give a brief comment under my report on Sail Boston preparations for this community. Some meetings were held last night at the MWRA in this respect, and I'd ask the chief to come forward and make a brief presentation to the public as to what the public can expect when Sail Boston occurs on Friday through Sunday of that, of next weekend.
Let's see if this is, this is a clicker or work, everyone. Like, I'll try to move this up a little bit so you can, if you want to interfere with your recording. I'm also joined by Chief Flanagan and Master Larry Powers, as well as last night, we're at MWRA giving a same presentation about Sail Boston, the United States Coast Guard was there last night with us as well. It's a non-private 501(c). Most of the money that generated through the 501(c) is being spent for the securities inside the city of Boston. Sail Boston, it's called that for a reason, and they're not really helping us with the impacts that outside communities are facing through our own security challenges generated by the event. So we'll keep our eyes on the grand line. These ships are coming from the United Kingdom, Portugal, and coming down to Bermuda. From Bermuda, they'll come to Boston, and then they go to Halifax and Quebec City, that's the Regatta Bridge. There's 13 Class A ships 150 feet over there, 12 Class Bs, and 24 Class C ships that are less than 100 foot, and one US Navy vessel. During this event, we're following more towards the beginning of this event, we'll have a Navy flyover as well, which will start off of the shore of Winthrop and circle into the Boston Harbor coming by Deer Island. There'll be two flyovers, one in full formation and one in single formation, so you'll have the US Navy doing that flyover as well during the event. This here is a matrix of five each ship, and more, most of larger ones, and they'll be accompanied by five smaller ones. The first one starts at 9:00 AM, and the starting line is over more like Elliott Circle, right up, if you draw a line straight out to the, into Atlantic Ocean, then you'll see that the, the starting line's going to be. The last one here has to be docked by 2:00 o'clock. So for Winthrop, for viewing purposes, is 9:00 to 2:00, the best area in Winthrop to view will be Deer Island. The anchorage areas, the night before, they'll be anchored off of Nahat and off of Broad Sound in Riviera. This will be heavily controlled by the state police and the US Coast Guard, they're in the security zone 100 yards away from these ships at all times. The start time is 9:00 AM. Spectators that are going to the temporary anchorage areas must be there by no later than 8:30 AM, in order to be anchored before the parade of sails starts. The temporary anchorage areas will remain in effect until 4:00 PM. Winthrop is very unique position, our anchorage areas are close to Deer Island, so if you're going to come into the harbor, and Larry, please excuse me if I misspeak here, into the harbor and back to the anchorage areas, where if you're on the south side of that line, you'll not be able to cross over the channel at any time unless you're going to have a bunch of security vessels swarming down on you very quickly. This is the start line, again, you can see this is Deer Island, they're about 800 feet off the shore, they're in the full sail from the start line, and then right here, they're going to be starting to lower their sails. They'll be in half-mast sails, and they'll be also under motorized power. So Deer Island's really the last spot you can see them on the full sail. We talked about the safety zone 100 yards on either side of the tall ship, there will be a 25-yard safety zone around each ward participating in tall ship once they get docked in the city of Boston. The other part of the anchorage area will be the Federal Navigation Channel, additional buoys will be used by the Coast Guard, to mark the channel line as a visual reference. These are the anchorage areas here, the closest to Winthrop, is Deer Island, Anchorage Area Eight and Seven. Anchorage Area Six is for recreational ship vessels that might be there with a, a whole sightseeing tour coming in from the city of Boston or other, other places. There's also anchorage areas 11 and 12, which is not that convenient for the Winthrop residents to be anchored, much rather be anchored here, where you can have access to your inner harbor. This is just a depiction of Google Docs of how close they'll become. And once you're in Boston, this is the traffic flow that will be utilized inside the harbor, the Harbor Masters office will be in Boston assisting the Coast Guard, State Police, Environmental Police, and many other harbor patrols to control the flow of traffic inside that harbor, and also provide security for these vessels while they... and also provide security for these vessels while they're here. This is the Deer Island slide here, there'll be no parking on this particular, all the way up, if you see yellow, there'll be no parking at all allowed. Screening areas will be here for pedestrians, they'll be screened by private security and the state police. The state police will have a large contingency personnel on the island on that day. Everyone will be screened, will go through prohibited items and non-prohibited items. You'll be, you'll risk being, once you've been screened, to allow your access and once you come into this area, you will left or right on either path you want. The Deer Island will also be having, this particular area will be vendors and bathrooms so people have access to that area for refreshments and facilities as needed. Also, I think they're gonna have a cooling station and of course they'll have the MWR A drinking fountain down there as well. So there'll be plenty of amenities once you get out there. This is the preferred viewing spot that Deer Island is recommending and MWR A is recommending is right there by the digesters. It's a pretty good view and they'll be pretty close at that to your line. There'll be no parking in here, MWR A employees will not get allowed on the island to park. They'll be bussed in from Chelsea, all employees will report to Chelsea and be bussed there. The night before, around six o'clock, when the police department, conjunction with the state police, will close Taz Out right here at Elliott. Traffic will be sent back up towards Shirley Street on Taz Out. Buses will be making the swing and discharge passengers there and continue on up Taz Out. That's, that was a necessary slide in order to prepare for the event and make sure that the island stays sterile until we actually open the, the gates for processing, which will begin Chief Lennigan at six AM?
Six AM in the public regard to the island.
Thank you. Once, to be determined it's necessary to close down Point Shirley, we'll use the July Fourth Strategy Plan that everyone's used to. The only addition to that plan this year is residence stickers. That's to make it convenient so no resident doesn't have to show their license or registration to get to the house. We also, we ask these stickers to be placed on the driver's side windshield, right above the residence sticker so you can see it coming out. And try to speed up so we're not holding up residents who are just trying to get home. We have plenty of personnel in Euro Beach, all the ATDL for pedal bikes, or the motorcycle and also a bottle of assets from the Sheriff's Department and other law enforcement agencies on motorcycles as well. The prohibited items, again, if you've been to any kind of ASL event after nine eleven, you know what you can't bring, don't bring guns, don't bring knives, don't bring pump-up tents, don't bring clothes, or else backpacks larger than bags. No drones, we're within a five mile radius of the airport, drones are illegal on any day, especially this day, no drones will be allowed, will be heavily enforced. No grills, no bicycles. If you want a bicycle to the island, it'll be outside the security perimeter, there will be bike racks that you can walk up to. Deer Island, MWR A is providing those. Now what can you bring? Small clutch bags, shoulder straps, single handle coolers, folding chairs and beach chairs, umbrellas, baby strollers, diaper bags, last baby bottles, blankets and tops by ten by ten only. There'll be no storage of any bags, if you bring the wrong bag, they don't allow it in, they're not holding it for you. Either they're gonna return it to your, your car, walk it home, or they're gonna put it in the barrel. That's very important for everyone to understand. Street closures, we, we definitely can assure you of, it's down in the audience, Elliott, that will be blocked. Delbies, if needed, be concerned, Tuckbury and Underhill as needed. We're hoping that we don't have to close down the point at all, but we have to be prepared if we get an onslaught of spectators going into Euro Beach or the island, we have to make sure that we have the assets available to close it down. Euro Beach will have an event that's being organized out of the Town Manager's Office. Some businesses have committed to us already, these are the list of businesses that plan on attending. Joe, do you wanna add anything? Do you have any updates on businesses to Euro Beach?
So no, no real updates as far as adding anybody to the list. We've kind of confirmed this list, there are a couple of businesses on here that still need to meet with the police chief and the licensing board because they're not established in town businesses and they don't have, currently have any paperwork with the town, but most of these vendors will be able to be in Euro Beach for free that day. We're hoping for a big event, we're gonna be running shuttle buses if the street gets closed at Douglas Corner, we'll be running shuttle buses from offside parking areas along Veterans Road, at the Middle High School, and in the center. We'll be running shuttle buses to the landing, so we're all providing transportation as far as the landing, I mean, there, people will wanna get to Euro Beach to arbit, will have easy access to do so, if they wanna walk out to Deer Island from there, then that's, that's up to them. And we have, Sean is, Sean Frisco with Parks and Rec is also arranged to have some events on the beach side, so it's gonna be a very much a festival activity on Euro Beach. It's not an optimal viewing point, but you can see in that map earlier that you'll still be able to see pretty, that the ship's pretty much under full sail from Euro Beach, so we're hoping for a real fun Sunday day that will benefit the residents, not, not just be a traffic problem.
And that shuttle service is gonna run regardless of we're open or closed on Delbies. So that, the shuttle service is here on Veterans Road, you see by Lewis Lake Park, up a quarter way down the street, there'll be another stop and about a quarter way till we get to the end. That'll be the first spot, once those fill up, we'll push people over to the high school and once that's filled up, we'll push people down to Waldland Street area and the parking lot area and shuttle them from there. The shuttle is gonna run, Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, eight to four?
Yes.
Eight AM to four PM to get everyone back. We'll have signs posted in the shuttle, last shuttle leaving Point Shirley at three thirty, so everyone's prepared to, to take their stuff and get back on the shuttles beforehand. Chief Lennigan is working with Action Ambulances to have assets on the island as well as in the Point Shirley area, so we'll not be shorting our services for the rest of the town to occupy more services into the MWR A. There'll be additional resources provided from his units as well and of course Chief Powers as well, the Coast Guard, to provide some security for them as well throughout that whole week. If there's any questions, we'd be happy to take them. Chief Lennigan, did I miss anything?
No, everything was covered. We will have some people, when you do get dropped off by public transportation, you'll be dropped off at Taffson Elliott into the premier viewing spot, you have roughly a mile walk. So Action Ambulance is gonna provide some gaiters, for lack of a better word, four-wheel drive, all-terrain vehicles to help those who need transportation help to the premier viewing spot.
And that's, that's for people with handicap, disabilities, whatever, maybe elderly people that are struggling, when I, I just don't want that to be risked, true, everyone, general, to get around the gaiter or not. So, the apartment vehicle is running additional buses and the MBTA Transit is running a straight shot shuttle from Orion Heights into, into MWR A. So that's what we have planned, we're trying to think of everything we have. Steve Callan has been assisting with the road barricades as well and he'll have additional resources out that day as well for, for barrels and assistance, so, thank you.
Great. Any questions from the council?
The only question I'd have, sorry.
Yeah, that's okay, yeah.
Are these stickers gonna be any good for the residents for July Fourth as well? I didn't know that.
Yeah, we, we'll just, I keep them on and we see that vehicle with that sticker, we'll wave it through as we know they're up there from Sturgis Street inbound. Also, just on distribution of stickers, we had a break tank last night at MWR A facility and a lot of stickers were given out. Again, on the six, seven, and eight, at the Harbor Master Building and the landing, from six PM to eight PM, we have offices down there giving out additional stickers and we're gonna add a Sunday from ten before on June eleventh at the police station. So we add that day to try to capture people who have the work nights and, and, and people on hot ships, they can all, like, have the chief and be with them individually and they'll do as best they can to accommodate.
All right, we'll accept maybe three questions so we can move things, I think the Chief has answered most of our questions. Anybody from the audience has a quick question, you know, maybe we can detain two or three questions. If not, we'll move the meeting along.
Mr. Power?
I have a question.
Yeah?
It's a follow-up, anybody who has a boat and is planning on launching a boat from the landing that day, I would recommend you get there as early as you possibly can. The landing, once it's full, we're shutting it off. So you will be able to come down when the landing's shut off, launch a boat, but you're not gonna be able to back there, you'll have to take it, use the power of the trailer, back out of the landing again. There are designated areas in the landing for boats with, yeah, boats with tow trailers, cargo boat trailers, and those will be enforced, it is a state facility, we have a land use agreement, we have to provide X number of spaces for boat trailers. And we're gonna, unfortunately, we have to aggressively enforce that that day. So I would highly recommend if you're planning on coming down to the landing, to park your car, there is parking, first come, first served, and if you're gonna launch a boat, get there as soon as you can, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, real quickly relative to this event? If not, we will move on. Next item on our agenda is, yes?
Just a couple of continued items on my, that's okay. I did meet with Jim Caputo, project engineer of the DCR, in regards to the next phase of Winthrop Shore Drive improvements, which will begin in July. They are certainly going to be working on Winthrop Shore Drive, doing initial engineering and analysis and then begin the process of those improvements that we've all been waiting for, for many years. That has generated some concerns and continued conversation. I've spoken with Director Calla about the water main that is in that road and it's a delicate situation, to say the least, the, the water main, some of it is iron, not ductile iron, it's cast iron, thank you, and also it's not buried very deep. So it raises a major concern for the town, so we're going to be talking with DCR about how we might be able to get them to consider replacement of that water main along with the project. But I just want you to know, those conversations are going on and we'll, we'll be prepared to, to have Jim come in or, or members of DCR come in and give an update in future weeks about what they plan to do once they're settled in and, and know when they schedule things and when that project will be started in earnest, okay? But conversations have started and we are developing a, a plan for, for that project.
Councilor?
It's separate subjects.
Okay, so.
Okay. The Belle Isle Ecology Park groundbreaking with the Lieutenant Governor and with Speaker DeLeo and Commissioner Roy will be on Friday at three thirty. Anyone's welcome to attend, that's a great, this Friday at three thirty, be a great event for us to, as we embark on the, on the build-out of our marine ecology park at Belle Isle, so all is, all are welcome to attend that important groundbreaking. We're conducting our year-end close now and much activity in the finance office with respect to making sure that everything is handled and I've left reports for our, our staff for you to review, if you have any issues, please let me know.
Councilor?
Thank you. A couple of residents have recently pointed out to me that we have a number of board and committee appointments that expire in June of twenty, this coming June, and I was just thinking it would be great to get those, get a list of the positions that are, that are open and advertise that so that folks can apply for a position on the board or committee if they would like to do so.
Councilor Clark, could you?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Councilor. Anything else? Anyone else? Town manager? Complete? Okay. Next thing on our agenda is the school department update. Obviously, I'm, I'm new here relative to this position, so I'm gonna have, ask Councilor Latieri to give us an update on recent events.
Well, just, we'll just talk about this week really, it's a big week for the high schools for seniors, it's senior week. So last night they had their prom, all went well, tonight is senior night, awards night for the seniors, tomorrow morning they have their breakfast, luau night tomorrow night, and then graduation will take place Friday at the high school in the gymnasium. And, you know, obviously everybody's very excited, it's a big week for them, so congratulations to the seniors, it's been a great year for them and we wish them nothing but the best and I hope they enjoy this in the week.
Thank you, Councilor.
What time is the graduation?
Six o'clock, I believe.
Next thing on our agenda is old business. We're gonna start off our old business with discussion and continuation of the Town Manager's annual operating and capital budget for fiscal year eighteen of forty-nine million, one hundred and forty-six thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
Do we continue? We're gonna continue that because I think we're waiting for the Finance Commission to report.
Right, okay. So we have a motion to continue?
Yes.
We need a motion on? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that would be continued. Second item on the agenda. Mr. President? Yeah? Great, thank you.
I have my, I have something else. Where these came out of Finance Committee, do you want me to read them?
That would be fine, yeah, thank you, Councilor Delvato.
Excuse me. Coming from the Finance Commission, moved that the town council vote to transfer ninety-five thousand from Fund Seven Oh Eight, paving projects to Fund Nine Oh One, water sewer new line item to be known as the MWR A Contract Five. I take any other action relative there too.
Okay, that came out of, favorable out of committee?
Yes, it did.
Does not need a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Second item?
Second item, coming from the Finance Committee, is a move that the town council vote to transfer a hundred fifty thousand from Fund Nine Hundred Meter Upgrade to Fund Nine Oh One Water Sword New Line Item to be known as the MWR A Contract Five. I take, yeah, the red, action relative there too. They came from committee with a positive recommendation.
Positive recommendation, any discussion on this item? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Next.
Excuse me, Mr. President. The third item came from Finance Committee was that a hundred thousand is appropriate for the purpose of financing the engineering design and replacement of the water main, street and sidewalk improvements and service connections on Underhill, Hutchinson, Central, South Main, Taylor, Winthrop Street from main to banks, including all costs incidental are related there too. That to meet this appropriation of the treasurer with the approval of Town Manager's authorized to borrow a hundred thousand dollars, Mr. Fonda notes of the town under Chapter Forty-four of the General Laws or any other enabling authority to the treasurer with the approval of the Town Manager's authorized to borrow all proportion of such money, MWR A resourcing authority in connection to, to enter into a loan agreement or a financial assistance agreement with the authority and otherwise to contract with the authority with respect to such loan for any grant set, any grants already available for the projects or the, or the financing thereof, which grants and or age shall be expended for the project in addition to the amount appropriated, excuse, into borrowed under this, under this order and that the Town Manager's authorized to acquire by purchase eminent domain or otherwise such rights, titles, and easements as they may be necessary for such purpose, ban such rights, titles, and easements that are no longer required to expend all funds available for project, take any other action necessary or convenient to carry out the project.
Thank you, Councilor. When that came out with a positive recommendation, is there any conversation, any? All, motion to go forward, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Fourth motion, fourth item, it came out of Finance Committee, so from the Finance Committee moved that the council, the town council transferred five hundred and twenty-five thousand from the water sewer retained earnings fund, Nine Oh One, to a new line item in the water sewer fund to be known as MWR A Contract Five, excuse me, to fund the engineering design and replacement of the water main, street and sidewalk improvements, the service connections on Underhill, Hutchinson, Central, South Main, Taylor, Winthrop Main to Bank Street, including all costs incidental or related there too, or take any other action relative there too.
Also coming out of Finance, were we favorable?
Yes.
Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Does anyone have a, a log in for Council Delvato?
I think he's got us. He's got a couple going. And one more out of Finance Committee related, and that is Finance Committee that five hundred thousand is appropriate for the purpose of financing, the engineering design, and replacement of the water street, sidewalk improvements, the service connections on Underhill, Hutchinson... of the water street, sidewalk improvements, the service connections on Underhill Hudson Central South, South Main, Taylor, Winthrop Streets from Main to Bank Street, including all costs incidental are related there, too. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the town managers authorized to borrow $500,000 in issued bonds, notes, of the town under Chapter 24, Section 7, 3A of the general laws pursuant to any other enabling authority, the treasurer with the approval of the town managers authorized to borrow and apply for any grants or aids available for the project or for the financing thereof, which grants and/or age shall be expended for the project in addition to the amount appropriated and borrowed under this order. To expend all funds available for the project and take any other action necessary or convenient to carry out the project.
Also with a favorable recommendation out of Finance? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Mr. President, I have another item out of Finance Committee.
Yeah?
And we moved that the town council transferred from the capital stabilization fund, number 964, the amount of $115,225 to the general fund special article to be known as FY17 grant at Belle Isle Marsh construction events, or take any other action relative there, too.
Out of committee? Does not need a second? Any?
Nope.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
We have a small item, too, that came from Finance somewhere. It's coming up there soon. Motion out of Finance Committee, move that the town council transfer $14,000 from inspectional services account, 0124153530900, IT Services, the special article, 0196052588057FY14, the seniorship direct property, to fund this account through the end of fiscal year in the general fund, or take any other action relative there, too.
Out of committee? Any favorable action? Any conversation? Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you, Counselor. Next item on our agenda, under old business is center business, district oversight, residential parking.
The Rules and Ordinance Committee has met, as we spoke earlier, and has proposed a bylaw change to the town of Winthrop bylaws, and that change would be to add Section 10.48.045, which reads additional geographic and time restrictions. Section A, other sections of this ordinance notwithstanding, the town council may designate areas where resident parking may be restricted to residents of specific geographical areas. The town council, B, the town council can designate areas where resident parking may be in effect outside of the townwide times indicated in Section 10.48.010. Section C, any time or geographic restrictions authorized by this section shall be effective only at such times that official traffic signs are properly erected within the affected area to notify motorists of the additional restrictions. D, residents with an address within an area with a geographical resident parking restriction must apply for and display an additional permit in addition to the resident parking sticker in order to park within the restricted area. This additional permit must be properly displayed directly above the townwide resident parking sticker and will expire on the same day. E, the town council may limit the number of additional parking permits issued to residents in an area with a geographic restriction. In the event of such a limitation, permits will be issued to eligible residents who meet the requirements of the restricted area as indicated in Section 10.48.047 of this ordinance. Due to the nature of this application process, residents must apply in person at town hall during business hours and not online. No permits will be issued to exceed the number authorized, except in the case of a replacement permit. F, vehicles bearing a valid law enforcement placate or medical personnel placate properly issued under Sections 10.48.071 or 10.48.072 of this ordinance shall be exempt from the additional geographic or time restrictions of this section if applicant's address falls within the area with such additional restrictions in place. New section, 10.48.047, geographic and time restricted areas defined. A, Center Business District. Due to the size and nature of the Center Business District, the district has been split into zones. Permits are only valid for parking in the zone designated and accorded with postage signage. Zone 1, Section 1, parking on the following streets and municipal lots must be restricted to vehicles bearing a Zone 1 Center Business District resident permit from 6:00 PM to 8:00 AM. Name of the lot is the Walden Street Lot. Location is at Walden Street and Pauline Street, and it's the entire lot. That is the motion and the bylaw that we're asking to be passed.
And that's coming out of committee? With a favorable recommendation? No second is needed? Counselor Ringman?
Thank you. I have a couple of comments and questions about this. First, I think it would be helpful, sort of as a baseline, to get a sort of a red line or a markup of the existing ordinance that then shows the proposed changes so that it's easier to, to understand exactly what we're, what we're voting on. I agree with Lisa Alberghini's comment that we should consider whether or not we are going to limit the parking at the Walden Street Lot. First of all, I think this is a great first step, and we need to figure out some parking solutions for, for new development. And so I thank the Rules and Ordinance Committee for putting this together. It's really, it is really important. I do think since this might, this may be our, our first attempt at providing parking for one of the, for a new development, it, it may set a precedent for how we deal with other developments in the CBD, and we need to keep that in mind. And so it isn't clear whether the, with the proposal, whether the Walden Street Lot would be reserved just for one specific development or one specific zone in the CBD, or whether it would be the entire residence for the, the entire CBD. And I think we do need to make that clear. I would also recommend that we refer this out as quickly as we can and as fast a turnaround as we can to the EDCAC as well as the Transportation Committee, again, because I think it's necessary for us to resolve the overnight parking issues for res, for, for new residents of the CBD. But we also need to get the input and have a broader approach so that we, it, it's a more coordinated effort. Again, I think this is a great starting point, and I would be happy to sort of vote on the principle of moving this forward. But I think that we need to spend a little bit more time, like examining some of the details and how this may affect other developments in the CBD before we actually vote to change the ordinance.
You want to, Counselor?
Just, just, we're not changing the ordinance. This is a new ordinance that was put into effect with Center Business District because the issue has come up that some of the developers cannot get financing because there is no plan out there for what they will do for overnight parking, and I'm sure you're aware. We've had two meetings on the issue. We've had numerous people at different meetings. Between the two meetings, we probably had close to 30 or 40 people that came in from different areas. There were members of the Transportation Committee and members of the EDCAC Committee present at both meetings. And I think this is a starting point because we're only picking one zone, and that zone is just giving 21 spaces in the Walden Street parking lot. This, of course, will be amended if there is any other development, and if there's more developments in this point to come into town, we'll be adding a Zone 2, then sometime a Zone 3 or a Zone 4 when we find the right places for those. And at this point, this is the only available place that doesn't bother Center Business parking, but gives overnight residents of anyone in the area of the Center Business District a right to park.
Counselor Ringman?
Sure. So the, the sort of draft that I have in front of me that was handed out a few weeks ago, that marks off what is Zone 1, marks off a Zone 1, which is pretty much limited to one specific development. And, and I don't know...
That's why we didn't add that.
Okay.
That's why we would start with Page 1.
Okay. So it just isn't clear exactly what we're, what, what the plan is.
And just so I'm clear, and the public's clear, this is not dedicated to a particular developer for that parking, for that particular location. This is, would be residential parking for anyone in and around the Center Business District. Am I correct?
Correct.
Yeah. Counselor?
I, I would agree with Counsel England that I think it would be, if we could expedite having it evaluated by the EDCAC and the Transportation Committee. I know certain representatives, but I, I would like to have an official view, maybe at one of their meetings or whatnot, where they, they all get together and look at this as one and get back to us before we adopt it as, as a procedure or policy.
Town manager?
Yes, I concur with Counsel England in that this lot, if I'm not mistaken, is not, in fact, zoned in the Center Business District. And in fact, you need to adjust the lines of the Center Business District itself to have this incorporated into that district and be applicable there, too. So I would submit that that's something that you need to do first before this is adopted. So I, I agree that it should be up there.
Counsel England, what you're, just one second. Counsel Latier? You had his hand up.
No, just some comments on it in general. I just, I think Counsel Boncorian is committed for the multiple meetings, and I know they took a lot of input. I just thank you for the meetings that you had and the input that you received. I get somewhat concerned, for example, that lot, I get concerned on, you know, I thought on snow parking, I thought on when there's events at the rink, and that lot is used all the time. I encourage development to come down with it. I encourage responsible development to come, and it seems like we're rushing to, to lend help to people that don't even live in the community, where we're not thinking as much sometimes about the people that do live here already. And I just get concerned on the parking. I think, I think developers should be encouraged to think out of the box, and, and I know there's another development potentially in the center where the developer is thinking to, to create his own parking. And I, and I understand the economic feasibility, but these developers have to understand, and they should have their ducks in a row before they're purchasing properties for a lot of money, if they don't understand what the procedures are and where the parking can be. But I think we have to be very wary about limiting what extremely limited parking we have. And again, I don't know if there was talk about during snowstorms, if that lot is available for the whole town, during a hockey game or an event that's always held after 6:00 at night, if that lot's available for the town. I just think it's something that needs more discussion. I understand the concern of the developers, but I think we have to be very cognizant of the people that live in the area.
Counsel England, there you go. Counsel Bayard, did you have something else?
Counsel Bayard?
No, no, I mean, I think what Counselor Latier was saying, you know, I, I do get concerned that we do want the financing, so we're creating this parking ordinance for, specifically so they can get financed, but that, as everyone else has said, that's one development. We need to make sure we're looking at it from the whole CBD, Center Business District, and make sure, you know, I'd rather not rush through it and, and let some other folks like the EDCAC as well as the Transportation look at that.
Can I ask, Peggy Carr, do you have a meeting scheduled that you know of coming up?
I'm sorry, we don't have a meeting scheduled.
Okay.
I'm sure she'll be open to the idea of scheduling.
Right, right. Would you like, yeah, Counselor? Cal?
I just wanted to say one thing, too. When the master plan was put together, the Center Business District has a huge blanket of an area. It's not just, people think it's just the center. It's not just the center. It goes all the way up past the police station, all the way up to Belcher Street, up that way, and then I don't know how far it goes the other way, you know, past the middle school and up that way. When the ratio was put in that we're only using 40-something percent of our parking spots, that was that whole umbrella area. It wasn't just the streets that we know of as the center.
Right.
So those areas are very congested, and I think we really do need to make sure that we make the right decision, because it is, the parking is difficult. And I know nobody wants to hear it's difficult, even at the high school, even though some think it, it isn't. You know, and it's only going to get, we're going to get more and more vehicles on the road, which it, it's just the way of life. So we really do need a long-term plan here so that we don't rush into anything that we're sorry for later on. And I, I do think that we need to really pay attention to that.
Counsel England, would you recommend this going forward to the EDC?
And the Transportation Committee?
And the Transportation, the combined meeting?
Sure, yes. That sounds probably the most efficient. And I just want to reiterate again, I think the resident parking, a resident parking program for the CBD is a really good idea, and I think the Walden Street Lot should probably be included, but we just need to flesh out some of the details.
Should the TSAC be included in that group?
TSAC should always be included. I'd like to have...
You still need quietly?
Chief, you're quiet over there. No, I, I'd like it to be a combined meeting, you know, and if it could done, be done fairly quickly. I know there's some finances considerations for some developers, but we have to make sure it's right for the neighbors, too, and I think it's important we get it right. So why don't we set up, Denise, if we could, a meeting with...
Let's first vote, table this, continue it?
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Counsel, Counsel Vice President.
Is there a motion to table it?
I'll make a motion to table this.
We have a motion to table?
Second.
Second?
And send it to the EDCAC and Transportation Committee, TSAC, for further comment.
Okay, great. Thank you. Denise, you'll set that up for us?
Yes, sir.
Second, a motion?
It's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
A weak aye. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Opposed? Okay, it's been, it's been announced. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is dog park discussion.
Counsel President? This is something I had asked President, former President Driscoll, if we could have a discussion, and I'm happy to start the discussion if that's okay.
Okay, great. Yep, absolutely. Great, thank you.
Following our last vote on the dog park, I learned a couple of pieces of information that the, one is that the area at Belle Isle Marsh is designated as a, at an area of critical environmental concern, which I didn't, I guess, fully appreciate when we, when the matter was before the council earlier. And the other piece, following some of the social media discussion, is that a lot of dog owners who are very much looking forward to a dog park in Winthrop are concerned about that location also for other reasons, specifically the wood ticks and mosquitoes. And there have also been a number of questions about the other locations that were considered, the advantages and disadvantages of the various locations, and then if we do move forward with a dog park at Belle Isle Marsh, how that might fit in with the ecology park, because we certainly wouldn't want that to detract from the ecology park in any way. And I guess my concern is that we haven't had enough, or that we haven't had a sort of a public presentation or been able to lay out all of the locations that were considered, and the advantages and disadvantages of each location, and then get general feedback on, on all of that. And I'm a little bit worried that we might inadvertently find ourselves in a situation like the tennis courts in the parking lot, where, you know, sometimes it's better to get all of the issues out on the table ahead of time and get all of the feedback before, before we move forward so that we know what we're walking into. And my, I'm, I, I think this is difficult to bring up also because I'm very much in favor of a dog park in, in Winthrop. I very, I think it would be a tremendous asset for the community. I don't want to throw up any roadblocks, but it's, a successful project is going to require the right sort of public comment, period, before we break ground on the project. So my recommendation, and I'm happy to turn this into a motion, is that we sort of gather all of the information that we have about the various locations for a dog park that were considered, the advantages and disadvantages of each location, present that to the public for some feedback, and then make a final decision.
Just, just, I thought we had taken a vote on the dog park already.
We didn't.
Yeah, hold on. So we have taken a vote on the dog park. Counsel Delvanto or Counsel Bayard?
So, no, I mean, with respect to Counsel England, that, I believe, I forget, it wasn't that long ago, we actually did have a full presentation about the different options and whatnot, and, and there was a decision before we took the vote, I believe, and then, and talked about the positives and negatives of it. I think that Counsel Valone and DPW, Director Cala, kind of went through that. So, I mean, I know there's some feedback from certain constituents that we need to consider, but I don't know that we have to go through the whole process... consider, but I don't know that we have to go through the whole process again. Maybe there's a, an expedited way we could, you know, figure that out.
Yeah. Okay, Counsel Delvento, did you have something?
Yeah, um, the, seems to be two competing groups, I guess, on, on the dog park. There's a Citizens Dog Ad-Hart Committee that started over a year and a half ago, and Counsel Valone, who chairs the DPW Committee, which I'm on, we had probably seven, eight meetings on citing the dog park. We did several presentations before the council. Belle Isle Marsh, the Friends of Belle Isle Marsh were involved. We even spent several thousand dollars on an autobahn study to be done, and actually Mass Autobahn thinks it's a pretty good idea to put it there. It's, um, probably they're opposed, because right now dogs are running through the, through the Kill Martin pathway, and this will be a confined area for them. Where it's located is, they, they feel the Mass Autobahn would felt that it was very conducive to the area, would have absolutely no impact on migratory birds or any, any native species in the area. So, and it's, you know, the Belle Isle Marsh folks were aware of this. They did the study for them. They got, they got it several months ago, and they were involved at our meetings, I don't know, nine, 10 months ago maybe? I'm trying to go out of memory. So, I'm kinda confused as to where the, nobody knowing anything is coming from, because I don't think we could've, I mean, I spent more time setting, on, working on the dog park than I did on, on Northfield. I just don't know where that's coming from.
Town Manager, anything to add to that or?
I think, I think all has been said. We have tried to be transparent on this, and I have met myself with folks who also have different divergent opinions, and, and let's, let's understand, we are sensitive to everyone's point of view here. And I think, you know, the point is a good one. Whatever we do, we have to be mindful of not to have something be created that is a negative impact on, on the Kill Martin path or the Belle Isle Marsh. None of us want to see that happen. The fact of the matter is, we, we asked our, our dog officer to join us in a meeting, and he reported very specifically that there are dogs running amok down there almost daily. And then, in fact, you know, they are, you know, if there's any tick or, or other sort of issue, our dogs are unfortunately well advanced in that problem, unfortunately. And what this dog park does is it contains folks, the dogs and people, frankly, to, to a specific area. There was a 12's location process that the DPW Subcommittee studied. No place in town is an easy solution, let's be clear. Everywhere has issues. And so, this is a difficult task, and it's hard to tell some folks that they're the best of, of a variety of tough decisions, but that's in fact what we have. We do, we have much familiar with the ACEC issue. In fact, our ecology park just received its Chapter 91 permit, having gone through that ACEC analysis. And so, things can be done in an ACEC. They have to be done properly. They have to be done meeting the high standards of the ACEC, and this dog park will certainly have to do that. So, this is the beginning of that permitting process, and we will be vetted very closely by the DEP about what we propose and how we, how we construct, as if the council deems it necessary to move forward. So, we, everything in terms of the impacts that this might have will have to be mitigated, and cer, and that will be a certainty through the permitting process.
I don't know what the, is there any way to include the Friends of Belle Isle in some sort of an oversight group or something that might, you know, be able to give real-time feedback with us, or that way they can give us their opinions in real time so that we can make sure we're addressing and evaluating them? I don't know the answer to that, but something like that where you could get, you know.
Well, the vote's been taken, so I don't know if there's anything we can do in that regard. However, Counselor England?
Just a couple of quick comments. I mean, I think it would be really helpful to get, to flesh out some of the details about how, how this dog park might fit in with the overall ecology park. I know we've had different drawings and schematics of the ecology park, and it would be good to sort of consider that together for sure and put that out to the public for common, for comments. And I know also there were, a lot of work went into this, and there were many, many DPW Subcommittee meetings. And I, I don't recall a presentation about the various locations, but if that's available, I would, you know, I think it would be helpful to see that and put that out into the, into the public. And I'm also wondering about the cost of the project. I know that the dog park group has raised some private funds, and I'm wondering what the difference is between the private funds and what the park actually is going to cost, because given the overall context, again, with the school budget and the peer recovery coaches, we, we need to be really mindful of that. I guess I would make a motion that we table on the expend, any further expenditures in construction on the dog park until we gather a little bit more of this information, including, including the cost of the park.
It's been a motion put forward. Do we have a second?
I'll second it for purposes of discussion.
Second it for purposes of discussion. And again, we have to be mindful there was a vote taken.
So, yeah, I guess, I mean, the question, I thought we did know the cost, I thought we'd come up with that beforehand and we had voted on it for the cost. I mean, I think that it is a great idea to put it, maybe put out there, you know, whether it be on the web or whatever, that, an update on what this, what, what the project is and what the costs are to the town and things like that, but I don't necessarily think it should delay moving forward, I guess.
Thank you, Counsel. Anyone else?
That's why we have committees. The committees vent these things. Every committee's had meetings that are open to the public and, and noticed before any motion comes to this floor. And in those committee meetings, anybody has a right to come, bring their issues, bring their comments, before the Subcommittee's, every committee has done that. And we have, we bring it here, we pass something, and why would we go back to it? You know, we, we vetted it, and we passed money for it. And why are we gonna second guess ourselves a, a second or third time? And, you know, it seems to me there's no issue before us that we should be even discussing right now because there's no issue to be talking about.
One more per comment. I, I know that all of the Subcommittee meetings are properly noticed under the open meeting law and open to the public, and residents absolutely have an obligation to, to attend and to be informed, and, you know, there, it's not a very good excuse to say, oh, hey, I didn't know what was going on. At the same time, as the town government, we have an obligation to communicate with the residents of the community and important stakeholders, and, you know, sometimes that includes an extra reminder, hey, folks, this is what we're gonna vote on and.
Counsel Bayas?
No, I mean, I, I think that what Counsel England speaks to is the larger thing, that we need to figure out how to get into the, I mean, 22nd, 21st century of how we're communicating with the public as far as when things are occurring and what they are, because although we're meeting the basic requirements of the open meeting law and things like that, I don't necessarily think that's in the best interest of the public.
If I may, this has been voted on, we, we do advertise in the transcript, we advertise on channel WCAT, it's on the Town Managers blog, it's on the town website, many times it's on the Chamber website. You know, I don't know how much more we can do without, you know, standing out in French Square sometimes, not only this issue, but lots of them. And until it becomes part of your own particular backyard, sometimes it's not really noticed, and that's what happens in many cases, myself included. So, there's been a motion, there's been a seconded, been discussed, all in favor of Counselor England's motion? Say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? No?
No.
Okay, been overruled. Thank you, Counsel. Social media discussion here. And first of all, I want, I want to say thank you to Town Clerk Counselor Carla Vitale for all her hard work. Thank you.
Rules and Ordinance Committee has met two meetings that were pretty well-attended, with comments from people. We have had the social media networking policy since April 13th, when our Town Clerk Carla Vitale first submitted it to us. And we found as a committee that it's a necessity that we do establish a social media and networking policy for the town of Winthrop. So, the Rules and Ordinance Committee at our last meeting, and that was the second meeting on the subject, voted to bring this before the council and asked the council to adopt the social media and networking policy, and I shall move.
Thank you, Counsel. Coming out of committee? Yes. Does not need a second?
Okay, and the discussion, what, what the social media networking policy is, that it will go out to each officer of the town, each employee of the town, each committee member of any Subcommittee's in the town. And each of them will be given a copy of this social media and networking policy and be asked to sign the certificate saying that they received this social network policy and that they understand it, so that we don't have certain negative things that are happening in areas like on Twitter or Facebook or so on. Each employee, each officer will be held accountable that they know what is permissible and what's not permissible to go on the social media. So, I ask the council to adopt this policy.
Open for discussion, anyone else? Counsel Delvento?
Being a member of the Rules Committee, we did discuss this, and this is pretty typical of a policy that most cities and towns that have, have a social media policy are adopting, something that, as, as time is rapidly, you know, passing this digital age, you can see more and more of these policies. It's only a policy, it's not a, not a. So, the enforcement is, is a, it's a town authority issue, but it's to let our, let employees, officials of the town, appointed committee members, whatever, that there is, there are guidelines, and these are guidelines that need to be followed, and they're pretty much, I hate to use the word boilerplate, but it's pretty much becoming a boilerplate for most cities and towns.
Thank you. You know, it's, it's a sad state of affairs from my point of view, you know, we, we don't have the respect and decorum, and the intimidation that takes place on social media and bullying. Some of the things we ask our kids not to do occurs lots of times by adults, and it's a sad state of affair we have to adopt this kind of policy. That being said, I'd like to have a vote to adopt the policy as noted from Rules and Ordinance.
I have a couple of comments on it, and I apologize because I was not able to attend the last Rules and Ordinance Committee meeting. Under section 5.8, where it says the town of Winthrop's social media networking shall not be allowed for the following purposes, I would suggest adding fundraising to that list, because I think that that is a, not appropriate when it's coming from a, from a government entity. In section 5.11, it says officials and employees representing the town of Winthrop via social media sites must conduct themselves at all times as representatives of the town of Winthrop. While that is certainly true, we might want to make clear that that is when the individual's acting in his or her official capacity on the town website, so that that is separate from a personal account. And then, the same comment for section 6.9 on personal comments. Certainly, it's not appropriate for anyone to make a personal comment from a town account, but we, I, I don't think we can be in the business of policing folks' personal, personal accounts on their own personal time outside of working hours. And so, I would recommend that we just make those clarifications to the policy, otherwise I think this is really fantastic and.
Is there an amendment you're proposing?
An amendment, yes.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. Yep. Counselor Boncory said whoa, 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 so we had to hold this on.
Yeah, I think before we make amendments, it should go, I mean, we could adopt this now.
Right.
And if somebody wants to amend it, it should go back to the Subcommittee for all those amendments, should go back to the original author to talk about it, and then come in with amendments at a future date to the policy. I don't think we should be amending it off the cuff such as that, because I, I disagree in part, because I think once they are an elected or appointed employee, they represent the town. They represent the town 24 hours a day, whether they're on their own, you know, laptop or whether they're on our laptop. If they represent the town as an official, they should be held accountable for things they do on their own time as well as they do on town time, you know, because we don't have town time.
Right, yeah, no, but notice.
So, I think, you know, we should pass it as it is, and then if the amendments want to come out next week, let them get vetted, sent to a committee before we start amending.
Okay, so, Town Manager?
Yes, I just want to say for the record, and because the chief is concerned, the issue with the Police Department is that they have a stricter policy, in fact, than this, and for very good reason. For example, off-duty, they are restricted and prohibited from making comment because of their role as a police officer. And so, while we're doing a great job of adopting something potentially that sets the rules for everybody, just know that there are stricter policies in certain circumstances, particularly in the Police Department, when that department needs to have stricter policies for, for obvious, you know, conduct reasons. So, just let that be known.
Mr. President? Counsel Delvento?
And, and also, the Charter has section 1.7, if I can speak time, if I can make it, it'll be a miracle, ethical standards. And I'm just gonna let, that's what Phil Counsel's to read it, because I don't know if I can make it through it. But that also puts some, some teeth into how, how the policy has to be learned.
Move the question? Requested to move the question? All is in favor?
I'm sorry, what is the?
The question is to adopt.
To adopt, that's what Dobbs does. All in favor of adopting as requested from the Rules and Ordinance Committee?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
One opposed, two, two opposed. The policy is adopted. And again, I think as we go forward, Counselor England or anyone else on the council, any changes we need to make, I think would be appropriate. I think your suggestions were valid.
Absolutely, I'll have those discussed.
Thank you. Okay, next thing on our agenda, we're gonna move to new business. First item is to continue the Town Managers' annual operating and capital budget for fiscal year 18 Enterprise Fund, June 6th.
Just, I'll make that motion?
Second? Yeah, Counsel President, I, I think there's just ongoing concerns that we've heard tonight, and we're just still taking an input, and just gonna move this on until next meeting.
Okay, so that's been, that's been a mo, that's a motion, is that in form of a motion? No? Okay. Next item? I'm sorry. We're going to move the Town Managers' annual operating and capital budget to the next meeting. And a new business. Winthrop Middle School Site Rezoning Recommendation from the Economic Development Citizens Advisory Committee. Recommendation to move that, continue that to a next meeting?
We're waiting for the draft of that, Council President.
Town Manager, I'm sorry?
We're waiting for the draft of that, Council President. It's a matter that was put on the agenda as a placeholder for a request that former President Driscoll had made, if you recall, to the EDCAC, to propose a rezoning recommendation, and I believe that they're planning on working on that, as we were informed by Mr. Carroll in an email soon after the request was made. So, I believe that's something that's, of a subject of that committee, and we have this as a placeholder on the agenda in order for that to move forward.
Okay, so that'll be brought up at our next meeting. Next item, it's the reauthorization of $54,000 for revolving account entitled Falling Street Gym and Recreational Center.
Motion for finance.
Motion has been made, seconded, refer to finance, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Transfer of $50,000 to Ingleside Gazebro Repair.
Motion for finance.
Motion, refer to finance, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Reauthorized tax title revolving. Reauthorize tax title revolving account, $30,000.
Motion to refer to finance, second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Transfer $15,000 MIS personnel and $11,571 North Shore Agricultural for Department Payrolls.
Motion to refer to finance, second.
All in favor? Reauthorize $20,000 to revolving account entitled COA Revolving Account.
Motion to refer to finance, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Transfer $18,800 Proxent Rex from retained earnings to fund summer payroll.
Motion to refer to finance, second.
Motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Transfer $9,450,000 to vending machine public landing boat launch slips.
Motion to refer to finance, second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Reauthorize a revolving account entitled EB Newton Revolving Account. Motion?
Motion to refer to finance.
Motion to refer to finance, second. Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Reauthorize the site plan review revolving fund, estimated revenue of $20,000.
Motion to refer.
Motion to refer to finance, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Verizon pole location install on Veterans Road to upgrade service.
Motion to refer to DPW Committee?
Motion been made, seconded, all in favor? Adopt public record access guidelines.
That's a motion that's been, that's in your packet, it's intended to have us adopt the law, the new law that's been changed to require us to follow the new state guidelines relative to, at the administration of the new public records access law. And so, we need to actually firmly adopt that to be held to account for it as a community.
Yep, refer that to Rules and Ordinance?
Yep.
Motion to refer to Rules and Ordinance?
Motion been made, seconded by Counsel Boyajin, all in favor? One up, one no. Public Safety Building Committee, refer that to committee on committee?
Committee of Public Safety.
Public Safety or?
Refer to Public Safety. Refer to Public Safety.
Yeah, okay. Public Safety Building Committee?
Public Safety.
Yeah, Counsel.
Building Committee.
Will refer that to Public Safety Committee?
Motion to refer to Public Safety.
Motion been made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we've got a second round of public comment.
As, as Counsel Boyajin is saying goodbye.
Mr. President, point of order? Yep.
Section 1.7 of the Charter. Reads, "Elective officers and employees of the town are expected to demonstrate by their example in the general con..." I'm going to read the whole thing. Or, "The persons who do his responsibilities, the highest ethical standard is to the end of the public, we justify, we have trust and confidence in integrity of its government, electing and appointing officers of the town are expected to recognize by their acts to demonstrate that they act always as agents of the public, that they hold their offices or positions for the benefit of the public, that the public interest is their primary concern, and they are expected to faithfully discharge the duties of their offices regardless of personal considerations. As such, at the oath we took, we, our council is 24/7, I do not believe that we can step aside our council duties without resigning our council duties and become a member, member of the general public and address the council."
Okay, then maybe we can get a point of clarification from our lawyer, and...
Any other public comment? Yes.
Don Manning, freezing break. As that here on the center you discuss, creating, creating, not changing.
All right, we, we, address please, address.
You said creating. The council said creating a new ordinance, so that the developer could get financing. I never once heard anything about the current residents and taxpayers that have been living there. So, my question is, how much does a favor like that cost the Finance Committee or the the Ordinance Committee, who makes these new ordinances apparently for certain people? Because I don't understand why a new ordinance is going to be created for a developer to receive financing.
Mrs. Manning, I don't think it was created for a developer, I think it was created for access to anyone, any resident in the Center Business District to use that particular parcel.
That is not what the Vice President's words were, and they are on that video.
Yes.
He, the Vice President, said when reading that, the ordinance, that the ordinance was being created so that the developer could get financing, that the financing, the bank would not finance without the park.
For any personal privilege? Yes, yes.
Okay. Ms. Spink, Dawn.
Yeah.
The article was created for the whole Center Business District, not just for one person. For anyone living in that Center Business District can park in that Zone 1. It's not created for one person. I, as an aside, at our meetings, as was talking, because this came to us from the Town Manager's office, to us, to start some development, to help start some development, but it's not just for that development, it's for anyone living in the Center Business District can park there overnight. There was an issue where the developers came to us and announced it in their public meeting, in the open meeting, that they couldn't get their bank financing, because the bank wouldn't give them money unless there were designated spots in the center for these people that are going to move into, not just their development, any of the developments in the center. The banks were giving them a hard time to finance them if they didn't have, if we didn't have a plan for a center overnight parking. Because right now, you, you can't park overnight from 6:00 to 8:00. With residence sticker, you could park from 1:00 in the morning to 8:00, but there's no 6:00 to 8:00 parking anywhere in the town presently. So, going along with the Center Business District redevelopment and with plans, maybe three or four right now that are beginning to develop, we decided that we should put some parking that's limited to resident parking in that Center Business District, not just one development, but all the developments, or all the people that are already living there can park in there.
Yeah, and two, two other things. Number one, it hasn't been adopted, it's been referred to Economic Citizens, economic development committee, so there's still room to discuss going forward.
Yeah.
Any other comments regarding that?
And, yes, I do understand, I understand, but I want you to understand that you did say, and I am quoting what you said, is that the developer cannot receive financing without this ordinance going through. My second comment is, I remember within the last couple years, when the town council President Gill was there, there was a meeting, and there was discussion, that if one of the councilors had something to say, that they had to come over the side and represent themselves as a resident that they...
That's been, that's been, that's been challenged tonight, and we're going to get clarification on it.
We'll have to get clarification.
We'll get clarification going forward, thank you.
But I do remember it coming up.
I appreciate your memory, thank you. Any other public comment?
Well, can I come up as a member of the Transportation Committee?
Yeah.
Is that, is that the same thing that we just went through, we're trying to do this?
No. We're okay with that?
Okay. All right. In lieu of my chair, I'm not going to use the microphone, so I'm allowed, in lieu of my chair, she couldn't be here today, but she wanted everyone to know that a brand-new fleet of green energy buses are starting, they're supposed to be starting on tollships weekend, I think they're actually starting tomorrow. I think you're going to, you've already seen them on the road, you're going to see them on the road tomorrow, I think, is what's happening. So, we're hoping that everybody watching, everybody around, can start talking about this really great new amenity that we've all, you've all worked really hard on, and sort of through us, been able to get it done. The new buses will not have the Charlie Card technology, because they're getting rid of the Charlie Card technology across the entire MBTA system. There will be no bus or train that uses Charlie Cards starting in two years. It's extremely expensive to get it on a bus and then take that one two years, so they're not going to be doing that. There are some, whether it's a sticker system, we're going to be coming to you, Counsel President, at some point, to see if we can work with the MBTA to get a temporary program in place for the next two years until the whole system switch is over, to make sure Winthrop residents are not, continue, don't continue to be disenfranchised from the MBTA system the way that we have been. All the new buses will have GPS locators, so even though they're on a regimented time schedule, you will be able to check from your phone, no matter where you are, to find out when that bus is coming. We're meeting with the MBTA again on Wednesday, next Wednesday. They're bringing in a software called Remix Software. It's a really high-end bus route navigation software, where we can explore a million different options on where these bus routes can go, 10 years in the future, 15 years in the future, as residential development starts to pop up in different places. We're going to have different demands for ridership, and we're going to be able to explore all that next Wednesday. All of you are welcome to come, I think it's going to be a really cool opportunity to look at that stuff. We've met with TSAC, we look forward to working with them, and we're really excited to work with them, especially on the complete streets improvements. It's a really great funding source, we're really happy about the support of the council, and we're really looking forward to the next year or so. Inter transportation element.
Thank, thank you, Steve.
You're welcome.
Any other public comment? There being none. Public relations, upcoming events?
Is it someone?
Oh, I'm sorry, someone, oh, yes. Angela? Yeah, please.
The law on Walton Street on the corner of Walton and Falling Street.
Yeah.
A lot of people use that to vote, and I was involved in a recent election, and calling people on the phone, they said they drove by and they couldn't park at the school, because now we moved the voting into the cafeteria of the incoming school, and had we known them, they probably wouldn't have voted. So, I think that law does give us voting. In the old days, you could have a half-a-day school, because we used the cafeteria to vote, and kids would have a half-a-day off, but we can't do that any longer naturally. And it's also used for the, the app here, and the photography club uses it, and the other people, the EB Newton School. I don't think people really know they can park in there, that it's public parking, there's no signet or anything. So, just by my, it's not utilized, but I thought I mentioned that in my phone.
Thank you. So noted, thank you. Any other public comment? If not, we'll close that portion of our meeting down. Public relations, upcoming events.
I did just have a text when I was commenting on the schools and senior week. Tomorrow, they have what they've had over the last couple of years, and it's been a tremendous success, and the kids get a real enjoyment out of it. They have the parade of grads, and they'll have the, all the seniors dressed up, and they're gone, and they'll go to the EB Newton, they'll go to the Fort Banks, and they'll go to the middle school also, and they'll parade through the schools, so the young kids can see what's coming up in the, in the, in the future, and it's very well-received. The kids really appreciate it, and I know the seniors get a great thrill out of it, so just wanted to let everybody know about that.
Thank you, Counsel. Appreciate that. The council will be going into executive session, anticipating going into executive session to discuss strategy as follows. Matters to be discussed, strategy with respect to litigation, discussions of these matters is, is an open meeting, and could, if we're discussing open meeting, could have detrimental effects on its process. Would like to get a motion to go into executive session.
Motion to move into executive session for the purpose of discussing litigation.
Motion been made. Have a second?
Second.
Second. Roll call, please.
Counsel Reven?
Yes.
Counsel Calhoun?
Yes.
Counsel Leary?
Yes.
Counsel Boyajin?
Yes.
Counsel Verone?
Yep.
And President Bonfirei?
Yes.
President Sampson?
Yes. We will be returning into open session to finish the meeting. Only, only for purposes of adjournment. Thank you.
Good job.
Everybody, good job. Thank you.